I'd like to call tonight's meeting for the Stanhope Board of Education for our August 30th, 2023 meeting to order. Please stand for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rope ball, please.
Mr. Battalato?
Here.
Mrs. Herald?
Here.
Mr. Valley?
Here.
Mr. Velardo?
Here.
Mr. Yagnam? Mrs. Sharpstein? Mr. Muscatello?
Here.
Mr. Hegeman?
Here.
Okay. Sunshine Law Statement. This is to advise the general public that to instruct that it be recorded in the minutes that in compliance with Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 entitled The Open Public Meetings Act, Stanhope Board of Education located at 24 Valley Road, Stanhope, New Jersey, has caused this notice to be posted at the office of the Stanhope Board of Education, mailed to the New Jersey Herald, the municipal clerk of the borough of Stanhope, the Stanhope Post Office, and posted at the Valley Road School and on the Stanhope Public Schools website, setting forth the time, date, and location of the meeting. Stanhope's mission statement: The Stanhope School District will provide a diverse and challenging educational environment that encourages individual initiatives, fosters success through teamwork, promotes accountability, demonstrates a passion for educational excellence, and ensures student achievement related to the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. The Stanhope School District is committed to the development of our students and staff so that individual aspirations can be achieved through their lifelong learning. We now have our new board member.
Mm-hmm.
Oath.
Can I remain seated or do I need to stand up?
I think it'd be better to remain seated so then you get the microphone.
Yes.
I, Avery Quail Battalato, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people. So help me God. I, Avery Quail, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a board of education and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability. So help me God.
Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome. Yeah. Just sign on the dotted line and then you're ours.
Can I sign in pencil or does it have to be pen?
I prefer pen if you don't mind. Thanks.
There's the next line down on your agenda. That's, I made a mistake. I forgot that, I thought Mr. Diagman was the
Thank you.
was on that committee, but it's Matia who is on the committee. So what's going to happen is that you're going to be on the business services, okay? And Matia will become the chair. Okay? Okay, that takes us to our presentation tonight for Mrs. Thornton, Gwen Thornton. Steve, I don't know if we want to, any prelude or?
No, just want to welcome Gwen Thornton from New Jersey School Boards Association, and thank you for taking the time to join us tonight.
Thank you for inviting me. It's a pleasure to be here.
We've had, with the exception of last year, only because we completed a strategic plan in the summer, we didn't feel it was necessary to bring school boards out. Since I've been here, we brought school boards out to assist us with ethics training and goal development. Kathy Helloa was with us for several years. She's no longer with the association. And when I asked for a replacement, I was assured that Gwen is top-notch. So I'm looking forward to the opportunity of working with you.
Well, I'll try to live up to that expectation. I actually spoke to Mrs. Helloa earlier this afternoon. She's an old friend. She was actually one of my board members in Somerset County, which I routinely cover. So I knew her as a board member years ago as well as a colleague. So she said to send her best to all of you. I know that she misses seeing everyone. So it is a pleasure to be here. If I can have the keyboard so I can get to the PowerPoint, we'll be all set. There we go.
Nick, am I in the way? The camera is not going directly up?
I'm going to fade into it, so we'll be okay.
I can stay here?
Mm-hmm. Thank you, thank you. Thank you. That's just the arrows, right?
Yeah.
Perfect. So typically, goal setting is about a collaborative process whereby the Board of Education, in collaboration with your superintendent, determine the focus for the coming year. And so we called it this year, sustaining the learning, accelerating our growth, recognizing that this is really the first full year we've had that has been essentially, and I use this cautiously, COVID-free, and able to be back in person, full-time, with all of the wonderfulness that comes with all of that. And so we know that there was learning loss that occurred as a result of COVID, and we know that you've had this little past year to sort of sustain the learning and start moving it forward. But how important it is to sort of accelerate that growth for kids so that we play catch-up in a way. And when we talk about goal setting, we talk about for kids, it's really about academic achievement, their skills. Are they competent? Do they have the knowledge helping them to grow, providing them with those experiences that will enable them to be successful at every grade level and then as they go on to high school and then off to college and careers? Or whatever it is they do when they leave secondary ed. So it's really about setting the course for student success, looking at what you've accomplished, what needs additional focus perhaps, and what are your priorities that reflect your core values as a board of education and as a school district? Because that's an important piece for all of you. So, you know, one of the things we know is that we have to close those opportunity gaps that were created by lack, by purely remote learning for most districts for quite a while. Some of my elementary K6s and K8s were able to come back in person sooner than some of the K12s in larger school districts. But there was definitely gaps that occurred for all students. So I always think it's important to reflect on the past year, to think about what we've learned over the course of the last year and a half. Student mental health needs has something that has arisen as a result of that break in schooling. The tenacity, endurance, and resilience of kids, they have bounced back, lots of them. You wouldn't even know we had ever had that experience. The importance of the school culture and climate, making sure that every school is a welcoming place for all students is a critically important component for boards to think about. Equitable access to the curriculum, the co-curricular program, because for some kids, it's the co-curricular program that drives their interest in school. Probably not so much at the elementary level, but certainly at the middle school and high school level. There are some kids that come to school because they can play football or because they sing in the choir, but it keeps them engaged. So thinking about all of those things. We found recruiting and retaining high-quality instructional staff has become quite a challenge. There's a shortage of various certified instructional personnel across the state. Another thing that we've seen is really parental commitment to the education of their children, which is a wonderful thing to do and to have. I was a board member for a decade in Bridgewater-Raritan in Somerset County, and we couldn't get people to come out to our board meetings. That was a long time ago, but now parents come out. Sometimes we're not happy about that in some districts, but it's really helpful to have their perspective and their viewpoint, okay? The possibilities and the limitations for technology for learning. We had to go and use the technology. COVID, one of the unforeseen consequences, was it probably drove the technological use, utilization, and skills of teachers ahead at least a decade faster than we would have been had it not been for COVID. Because there were just a lot of districts that weren't one-to-one. There were a lot of districts where teachers did not have the predisposition or the professional development to fully utilize technology. And so from that standpoint, we've learned how it can be used effectively, also what its limitations are. The critical need for ongoing communication and transparency. We hear that from districts all across the state, that parents want more communication. They want more transparency. The lack of predictable funding has complicated effective planning for school districts. You're an S2 district. That has been a challenge, and it continues to be unpredictable. We never know year to year what it's going to look like, depending upon the economy of the state and what the state budget looks like. And it would be wonderful, we continue as an association on your behalf, to advocate for a fair, equitable, predictable, reliable funding formula. I'm not holding my breath. I would like to think we're getting closer, but it's been a long time and we still haven't. And we've had multiple funding formulas through all of these things, and we're still not there. Okay? So your district goals are important because they set the tone for your entire district. It links you with your administration in terms of setting those priorities. It then drives any administrative goals that you may have for supervisors or directors or principals, which then translates down to the building level for teacher goals and their SGOs and SGP's, student growth objectives, as well as their professional development plans. So it ensures that if you have good district goals, which you did last year, because I have them in here, and I'm sure you will set them again this year, it drives the work of the district. It becomes the focus of the board's activity all year long because those goals ensure that everyone's oars are in the water, rowing in the same direction. That goal might look differently in second grade than it looks in sixth grade, but it's the same goal. And so it ensures that you are focusing around improving student achievement. Okay? Here is your mission statement. To provide a diverse and challenging educational environment that encourages individual initiative, fosters success through teamwork, promotes accountability, and demonstrates a passion for educational excellence. Your district is committed to the development of your students and staff so that individual aspirations can be achieved throughout their lifetime. It's really about creating lifelong learners, and it is a wonderful mission statement. I'm sure you just did it when you did your last strategic plan, put this in place perhaps.
This mission statement, I think, has been in place for more than 10 years at least since I've been here, which is one of the reasons why one of my suggestions was to focus on this and building a vision statement as potentially one of our goals this year.
Okay. All right. So why set goals? It ensures equitable policy development, moving you close to your district vision and mission. It establishes those priorities. It allows you to plan for professional development across the year. It allows for you to have periodic evaluation and recalibrating, adjusting if necessary. I know that you passed a referendum last year and that you've been doing a lot of work on that. But had you not passed that referendum, you would have had to recalibrate your goals in some fashion to reflect that you were unable to do that. You were very successful, and congratulations on that. It's very exciting that you're able to do that and to have so much of the work done at this point in time. But that's why it's important to have those goals, to know what you're working on, and that ability to get periodic updates to say, how are we doing? Are there any adjustments we need to make? It allows for effective communication and collaboration among you and your administration, but also with your parent community, to say, this is our focus. We need your help and support as we continue to move the district forward. And of course, as you know, it provides the objective basis for your chief school administrator's annual evaluation, which is a requirement in law. And I'm sure for you, Avery, who are brand-new sitting here, you're going, what? It takes a while to get a sense of what being a board of education member entails. And I'm sure they told you it's one meeting a month. It's an hour or two. They lied. But you will find that it is really exciting and engaging work.
Okay.
So you want to make sure that you have clear goals for student achievement, classroom instruction, and that it's based on a vision of high expectation and shared beliefs and value about what's possible for all students, that all students can learn and achieve. And that's our responsibility. So if you think about goals for next year, thinking about what will most dramatically accelerate student learning and address opportunity gaps if they exist, knowing how your educational program is currently meeting learning needs and supporting the social, emotional needs of your students, how you will address mental health issues if there are any among students and staff, looking at your data to identify those improvement targets, and what input do you have that suggests the needed improvement in student success, and then looking at how your financial resources, which are always a challenge, and budget will align and support your district goals. Because we do this out of sync to the district budget, and it's never been in sync just because of the way budgeting occurs in the state of New Jersey for school districts. Okay? And then, of course, in addition to those academic needs that kids have, most districts want to ensure, and New Jersey has done this for a number of years and done it really well, is to make sure that students are able to be critical thinkers, collaborative problem solvers, digitally literate, civically responsible, citizens who give back to their communities, culturally responsive with a level of learning, and moral, empathetic, and ethical compassionate human beings. So we're not just turning out widgets, right? We're turning out human beings who are prepared to support one another, to be kind, to recognize the importance of every individual, to be able to think through complex problems, to work with other folks in doing that. We know from looking at business and industry, particularly that a lot of work gets done by teams anymore. It's not individuals working in a little cubicle by themselves, that you have to have those people skills to be able to be successful. So all of those pieces as well. So these were your district goals from 2022-23, and there's year one. And clearly, I think you can say that you accomplished that. Right?
Yes.
Give yourself a round of applause for getting that done. Okay? Goal two, which was contingent upon the passage of this, includes all of those particular pieces. And I don't know, Steve, if you want to speak to what was accomplished or if you just want me to?
Yeah, so where we stand right now, we, our last meeting, we were able to take an opportunity to, as a board, walk through the building and see the progress. Our restroom renovation is complete. All of the work is done there, which is outstanding. The HVAC system is not a project that we plan to start until either late spring or summer of next year. However, we did a pre-bid opening
Monday.
Monday?
Mm-hmm.
The days are just running into each other at this point. Pre-bid opening Monday. We had several contractors here checking out the building and the scope of work, which is excellent. The roof is just about finished. It would have been finished if there wasn't a mistake in the company accidentally ordered the wrong color flashing. So they had to wait to get that. It's being installed. We expect it to be done before the weekend, right?
Yes.
Where their wall will be out and cleaned up and ready to go. We've had some delays with the media center into our maker space, or what we're calling our innovation lab. Most of the delays are with minor construction that still needs to be completed. Signage, furniture was significantly backordered. We expected it to be in and installed last year so that we're ready to go. If you walk by today, you'll see that half of the furniture is there. There's a whole bunch of boxes that we just moved in that needs to be organized. And the second half of the furniture delivery will be delivered and installed on Friday with a few pieces that are still backward. That's one of the reasons why I hadn't planned a ribbon cutting, a grand opening, because I wanted to see it finished first. Once the room is complete 100%, we have every intention of inviting the community in to see the finished product. However, at this point, it's as close to done as it can possibly be.
Well, we passed the C.
And to see, we just got the certificate of occupancy today, so we can have people in it, which is great because we need it because it's a classroom. The technology infrastructure, with the exception of a couple minor tweaks, is done. New switches, new access points, fiber throughout the building. That was just completed at the end of last week. And the science classroom is another project that we're hoping to complete next summer. So we're more than halfway done with the items that are within this goal. That was not part of the goal, but that was also a referendum project is remodeling our faculty room. And that is also 100% completed. I welcome any of you at the conclusion of the meeting to walk the building. I'm happy to walk with you if you want to check out any of the spaces. Sure. So this goal, as drafted, was a multi-year goal, two to three years, as noted there. Although I do believe we've made some progress here, there's still the majority of the work that still needs to be completed. And my recommendation is to retain this as a district goal again for this year. Our eighth grade students, I believe we have eight, six or eight of them that are attending a course up at the high school, started today with great success. So that was pretty exciting. I actually got to speak to one of them. She said it was a really great experience to go up. I don't know if you want to share later on when we talk how Charlie's experience was. That's a program that just started this year that us sending districts have worked with the high school, and we expect that to expand extensively and offer greater programming opportunities for the kids prior to this school year. As far as student choice within the building, that is something that once we kind of get settled this year in the fall and our feet under us, Alicia, our principal, and I know that that's going to be a lot of researching, some creative thinking, out of the box thinking, to try to bring elements of that into our school. And we have every intention to do everything that we can, but there's still a lot of work to go with that. You know, I lost my place, I'm sorry. And as far as the curriculum is concerned, we are making very good progress moving our curriculum to the Google Drive platform from Rubicon. Number one reason we wanted to do that is because it's more user-friendly for our staff who know Google, who use it every day. It allows them to more easily access, to make edits, to provide feedback, and I think it'll be easier upkeep. It's also free, therefore, we won't have to pay for Rubicon Atlas, which is not an expensive program for us. So again, a lot of work that still needs to happen there. So I truly believe that we will continue with this goal.
Here's goal four.
This one, I'm happy to announce that I'm pretty confident we are complete here. We had a committee, some participation, teacher participation, parent participation, that helped to design, identify the platform and design the website. Mr. Llama, our tech coordinator, did a lot of work behind the scenes and tweaking and soliciting a lot of feedback. And we are fully launched. The one piece that we are waiting on, which we are just about ready, is the company that we're using offered one time, I believe it was a small fee. They'll bring in a drone service to fly over our campus to take some pictures so that when you log into our website, that's the vision that you'll actually see. Not live, but an actual video of the drone flying over the campus. We wanted to make sure the roof was complete. If you, I don't know if you noticed, if it was dark when you got here. Sunnyside did all new landscaping in the front of the building. They re-sotted all of the grass. They did the mulch beds. They trimmed the branches, the trees. So this campus right now, on Tuesday, will probably look as good as it ever has. And that's when we want to try and get that drone to come in and take those pictures. So I think this goal is complete.
That's exciting. Okay, so these are what was still in process from this past year. And I just took this from what you sent to me and put it up here, so I'm going to let you talk about it.
So yes, this is what was goal number three, I believe, what's left of it at least. So really, we spoke to this already, and I do believe that as this is drafted, my recommendation is to adopt this as a goal for this year as well.
And then your suggested goals that you sent.
So Alicia and I were doing some brainstorming, just kind of seeing where we are just in general with the start of this school year and some things that we really want to accomplish. The first one, as we kind of mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, is to investigate and take a close look at our current mission statement, which, like I said, has been in existence long before. This is my 10th year, so it predates me. I think it's time to take a look at it. Our current students are nowhere near the same students that we had in this building when that mission statement was drafted. And I think we have to take a close look at our values, our core beliefs, and what we're trying to do, not just, you know, instructionally, but through character development and trying to raise productive members of our democratic society. So without, you know, reading word for word, you know, revisiting that mission statement, creating a vision statement, which is something the district has not had, and looking at and identifying the traits and key attributes of what we want our students to be. You know, what I see is trying to create a portrait of a Valley Road student, right? When you finish here in eighth grade, these are the things we expect that you'll be able to do, not just as a student, but as a person, so that we're sending well-rounded people up to the high school. The next one, we recently, obviously, everybody here knows that we sold a school, Linden Avenue School, which was not being used for several years, to a local preschool. With the space limitations that we have, we really have not been able to dive into the opportunity for preschool expansion, which is offering significant monies in grants from the Department of Education. Hapakong School District has been partnering with preschool, again. New beginnings? Anybody remember? I don't remember who they're from. It's not Celebrate the Children. They partner with the preschool organization that we sold the building to and have done so successfully. So I would like for us as a district to investigate whether or not we're eligible for the grant money and try to develop a partnership with them, where ultimately, we would receive the grant money and we would use those funds and pay that priest, that private preschool to accept Stan Hope preschool-eligible students. And what that ultimately provides is free preschool education for any Stan Hope resident who is of age and eligible, without having any cost to the district or the taxpayer. And lastly, we have this, we will have this beautiful STEM lab, innovation lab, with so many things to do. It definitely feels a bit overwhelming to implement a brand-new curriculum with new resources and new materials that we don't even have yet. I would like to make sure that we place great significance on making sure that we're making the most of the broadcast space that we built and the equipment that we ordered. You know, embedding it into STEM courses, developing after-school activities, using it for our morning announcements, you know? Maybe not every day at least to start, but maybe having a weekly newscast using our students, making sure that we're making the most of that space and the equipment that we're bringing in.
First impressions.
First impressions.
And kids love that.
Yes.
They really do.
So again, those are suggestions that Alicia and I really discussed. It does not mean that it has to be these goals. Obviously, I welcome any other feedback from our board if there's anything else that you'd like to see, if you have feedback on any of these. But I figured it's always easier to start with something rather than having a blank slate.
Absolutely. So you would retain this goal from last year.
Correct.
Right, which is the initiatives that need done at the science and the piece around completing the referendum essentially, and then the piece around the district initiatives in terms of the curriculum, which the state does require you to have one specific academic goal, and that certainly would address that requirement. And then you would have these three additional goals as well. I would tell you more than five is not doable, and you don't want to make so many goals that you can't achieve them, that you can't really focus on them. So this would give you five pretty meaty goals, I would think, that are grounded in what's good for kids. But it's up to the board to weigh in if there's any other thoughts that you have or concerns that you think that need to be addressed. But I think that these are wonderful goals.
All of these, obviously, the ones that were multi-year goals from last year, we've already discussed that we vetted those thoroughly last year. What you see up here is really not new to us. These language and these ideas have been bantered around for several meetings and discussed. Some in more detail than others, but they were all, you know, even when we were talking about the sale of the school, of Linden Avenue School, this preschool piece came up when we found out it was a preschool buying it. This was an idea. We mentioned several times that with the new STEM lab, that it would be an area for new things to develop out of. Maybe new courses come out of it or clubs come out of it. And one of the things that seems to, I know from at least half a dozen of my grandchildren, you know, that broadcasting and making movies is top of the line stuff. That's what they're into. And the last one, the top one for. Priest, not the preschool.
The mission statement.
Oh, the mission statement.
The mission statement. Gosh, it's at least, it's at least 10 years old, I believe. I'm not sure if that came before or after our first Chromebook.
It was before because my first year here, nine years ago, we rolled out our one-to-one Chromebook initiative, and the mission statement predates me.
Okay.
Closer almost to 15, I think.
Whatever the timeframe is, it's long overdue. And with the changes that we've made around the building, it's the perfect time to say we have a new face here and.
In addition to that, I'm sorry if I cut you off, we also just completed a strategic plan. So the voice of the community from last summer is, in my opinion, still pretty relevant and pretty fresh. And I think that the information that we got through that strategic planning process is going to be vital in the development of the mission statement, vision statement, and what we look for in a student. You know, obviously, still soliciting community feedback, looking to have all stakeholders represented in the committee that I'd like to develop. But I think, you know, with so much newness, I called it a facelift this morning at our opening in service. You know, with so much newness, I feel like there's so much energy too. It's just the perfect, the perfect time, the perfect opportunity to get people who are passionate and have this newfound energy involved in putting something like this together.
Be excellent. So are you all in agreement that those goals are what you would like? Any discussion around it?
Different idea?
I think they're great. Appreciate the effort that went into filling them together. I think it's wonderful. We have a continuation of some goals and a new goal. And I think, as you said, it's a great opportunity, you know, to focus on that large-scale vision and bring the community together and use the energy that exists. I think you did a great job.
Okay.
I think it's exciting when we see just how much has been accomplished. I mean, we had a lot of really big ideas and goals and, you know, timelines are always a questionable thing, but so much has been done. And, you know, that's truly all the hard work that you all have put in to make it happen is fantastic, and it's exciting.
Is now the time we're discussing the goals? Like, is this it or is there an opportunity to?
Were any feedback that you have, any questions, you have any other suggestions that you have? This is the opportunity now.
Okay, no, this is all wonderful and I appreciate it. All put together. One thing that I have a concern with that I don't see, or maybe I'm just missing it somewhere in the print, is when we talk about students as individuals, productive citizens and learned students. You know, there's that mental health aspect to it, and also being physically active and just movement and how that can play into the well-being and mental health of our students. So while, you know, learning STEM and all this is wonderful and it's important. We live in this, you know, highly technologically advanced global economic world, so it's definitely important. But with that comes a lot of stress. So I think it's important to introduce or think of ways that we can encourage kids to move, to be active, and to help them understand the benefits that that has on their mental health so that they're able to, you know, just have some sense of that beyond a traditional health class or things of that nature.
So just to kind of, I guess, expand and explain how I think that that's embedded in the goals that we have. So the first multi-year goal really focuses a lot on curriculum, right? It's a very, very overarching, general statement. But within that, you know, we're developing social, emotional, learning curriculum. You know, obviously, we adopted our new health and physical education curriculum, which, you know, is much more detailed and encompassing of the social, emotional growth that you're talking about than we've ever had prior. We, within this attributes of a Valley Road student, I think it's important, and again, I'm one voice, right? I can't speak for everybody, to include all of that, all of what we want those students to be within that criteria, right? Not just focusing on, you know, the academics or the sports and all of those, really focusing on the whole child, you know? So I don't know if that's kind of, if it kind of answers, I guess, what you're looking for. If you have another suggestion, obviously, I'm all in. So I guess, I guess what I'm trying to say is, I'm 100% in agreement with you. And I truly believe that those are all things that we're doing within the building. If there's another way to represent it within a goal, certainly am all ears and, you know, would love to hear some ideas.
So you're looking for something in a goal that states that that is priority or that we are looking at that?
Yeah, I mean, again, I don't know if now's the right time to discuss all of this because I could certainly bring this up later or we can discuss later. But yeah, it just seems like there was a lot of, you know, generic verbiage, sure. So, you know, under helping me understand what exactly is being done within those might help, but.
So perhaps in the goal that is a carryover from last year around the curriculum, you could add an additional objective that would say something along the lines of to continue to foster the social, emotional development of every child and support student and staff mental health needs if.
I think also, I think, and I don't mean to. I think when we talk about the whole child, and let me know if I'm overstepping, Steve. I think when we talk about the whole child and them leaving here, knowing that we've done a successful job as them moving into the high school, I always compare it to a triangle. And a whole child would be social, emotional, physical, and mental well-being. So you really hit all three of those aspects that you're addressing. I think you're just looking for the wording to make sure that that's clear so everybody knows that we're hitting every single one of those aspects. Because I am fully, I think we completely agree with you. We just want to really see it in print as far as, you know, getting out there and getting all those chemicals in your body, really firing and making sure, which leads to your good mental health, which leads to you being a better learner. So they all work together and making sure that it's in print so everybody knows what we're really looking for, I think, is where you're going with. Is that?
Yeah, definitely where I'm going with it, and I'll certainly spend a little bit more thought on it. And if I have something a little bit more specific that comes to me not on the spot, that's usually when I work my best.
I just, I drafted, I only read it once. Well, you started something, and I kind of feel like I took a little bit of everything. So adding a third bullet, as Gwen suggested, to continue to foster the social, emotional, and physical needs of all students through a variety of programs, mentoring opportunities, counseling, and through routine physical activity throughout the school year.
I think that covers. Yeah, that's great, for sure.
That hit?
Yeah, I appreciate that.
And to Matt's point, that certainly addresses some of when we did our strategic plan with the community, you know, and people were talking about the things that they wanted to see implemented from the little to the big. That kind of covers it. It brings all that back in there.
You can't have one without the other. You don't have the whole child. So we have to make sure we address all of it.
100%.
Does that sound okay? So we'll add that as a sub-point. I typed that out and I can send that to you if that's easier.
Thank you very much. I couldn't write it all fast enough.
Can I share a Google Doc with you? Do you use Google or no?
We do not.
All right, I'll export it as a Word and I'll send it to you.
Thank you very much. I wish that we would. We continue, those of us who work in the field, encouraging the association to enable Google Docs so that, because most of our districts are using Google Docs, so it makes it difficult. So I appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, so with that addition, is there anything else?
Anyone else? Idea? That was, thank you, Matt. That was good.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
All right, we're going to move on. As you know, the next step in this process, and particularly for Avery, who probably doesn't know, action plans are written for the implementation of the goals that outline what's going to take place, what the timeline is, who would be involved, when it will be accomplished, and then what is the status of that at any given point in time. So that you as a board and your community. given point in time. So that you as a board and your community will know that you're making progress on the district goals over the course of the year. Okay? The other kind of goals that we haven't talked about yet, that I know you have had in the past, are board goals. Board goals really refer to your processes and procedures, how you function, how you as a board can be more effective in supporting the district goals in terms of your governance processes and procedures. Okay? As you know, boards of education are primarily policy-making bodies. That's how you have a voice about what you want to see happen in the district through the development of policy. You provide oversight and monitoring, ensuring that there's a comprehensive program of curriculum and instruction, and then communications, both internal and external with your community and with the district. So in terms of thinking about what professional development would assist you in improving your governance skills, again, you know, you didn't do that this year, but hopefully next year you will. Look at your board self-evaluation. We are in the process right now of actually revising that document and updating it. And so next year it will look differently than it has in the past, but hopefully it will provide you with greater information than you may have had in the not-too-distant past. Okay? And then thinking about, here are some examples. Complete the superintendent's evaluation within the statutory timeline. There are a lot of boards that struggle to get this done by July 1, and it is a requirement in the statute. So that's something that a lot of boards will work on. Reviewing your bylaws to ensure that they reflect your current governance practices. Some boards want to explore operating by committee of the whole, if they have a committee system, or the inverse is true, if they operate by committee of the whole and they want to have committees, exploring that. Becoming more effective advocates for public educational through PD on advocacy. Those are all examples of things that boards sometimes will undertake. So you really want to look at what you see as your recent achievements and strengths, what you do well, and what you can focus on moving forward that might help you all. So these are your goals from '22, '23. Obviously, we're being livestreamed right now, so we can say with some degree of certainty that you've accomplished that. You've redone and have now a website that's probably much more effective in communicating with your community and making sure that you are providing those recordings, which you have, to ensure you're in compliance with Record Retention and OPMA, the Open Public Meetings Act. Second goal was, again, a two-year goal, encouraging board member participation in NJSBA events and training in order for the board members to become certified over the next two years. Again, working with NJSBA, including looking at master board certification and certified board leader. Again, we have just revised the requirements for certified board members to make it more user-friendly and more doable. That should be, it's not up quite yet. It'll be up in the next week or so, as soon as our executive director gets back from vacation and approves it. It will be up shortly. And that is something that, you know, you as a board could think about in terms of becoming a certified board if that would be helpful. A certified board requires us to come out and do training with all of you, but it doesn't require you to go somewhere else. Although, I will tell you that most programs, all county programs now, and most of our trainings are available in hybrid, meaning in live, you can go in person, but you could also do it remotely. And we also have several that are completely virtual in an effort to make it simpler for Board of Education members. So.
Interject for a second because a lot of our board members are newer. I completed my certified board member training this past year, but to what she was saying, there's amazing resources virtually that, they're short even, like 45 minutes to an hour tops, that you could do on a lunch break or, you know, after the kids are in bed in the evening, whatever time works for you. That has a lot of great information that then helps us as a board to be able to do all the other things. And you don't have to do it all at once. You don't have to go, oh, my goodness, I need 40 credits of whatever. You can space it out. And then if you go to workshop in October, you can pick up a whole lot of them just through workshop as well. So you can do it on things that interest you. So if the business side of the board interests you, you can do a bunch of those. I mean, you kind of have to balance it out, but you are sort of able to pick and choose more of what interests you versus not. So just something to consider.
And regardless, all of our webinars are also archived so that you can go on anytime in your pajamas and bunny slippers, or whatever is comfortable, and watch those webinars at your leisure. You know, you can start it, stop it, so that if there's something that is of interest to you, you have that opportunity to do it. And it's in all areas of governance, legal, advocacy, policy, labor relations, governance issues, you name it. And we've been doing webinars for the last three years, like monthly, so that there is a whole library of recorded information available to all of you, if that's something you wish to avail yourselves of.
Glenn, does the rollout of the new policy that you're discussing, does it change the timeline of the?
For a board certification?
Yes.
Yeah, it just, it's good for four years.
Okay.
So you just have to accumulate the number of credits over four years.
Okay.
So it gives you more time to do that.
Gives you more time. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So any thoughts? Obviously, this was a two-year goal. Would you like to retain this goal?
Yes, that's something that I think we need to do. One of the things we did last year, first time in my 15 years on the board, that we as a board made an effort for all of us to attend workshop. And we had just about everybody there. And I think it was a great experience for all of us to bond, at least meet new other board members and board members that are on our board, just time to spend some quality time with them in a different events and coming back and discussing those events. I thought that was very, very worthwhile. Two things that, I know Steve put them out there. We talked about it a little bit because they're high priorities for us this year, and they are time-consuming. And one is, this is a negotiations year for us. So I think one of our goals is to see if we could have our new agreement completed by the end of the school year so we could start next year with the contract. So we have a lot of prep work to do, financial review, input from administration, and our input, coming up with a committee to get all of that rolling. And the second one is that our policy book is getting pretty thick, and there's a lot of policies in there that really need to be reviewed. And I think it's time we just have an audit of that. We sit down and we audit that, we go through that policy book. It's more than just a policy committee to do that. It's just too big a job. So we may at some point divide that up by board members taking so many.
I'm sorry to cut you off. Strauss Esme, who we use, actually offers policy audit services, which I would strongly recommend that we look into. There will likely be a cost associated with it, but I can assure you that the time that Debbie and I and all of you would be putting into doing an audit ourselves would be well worth whatever they're going to charge us because they develop these policies. And they're very easy to work with. In the summertime, Debbie and I went to actually a policy seminar from them. And they're very, very good. They're very personable, and they have a lot of resources to help us. You know, obviously, there's still going to be work on our end from approvals and, you know, ultimately, what happened three years ago, we took our old policy handbook and we upgraded to their online version, where we can post it on our website, where you can actually search for a policy, whereas we used to have a thousand-page PDF document where you'd have to scroll through and find what you're looking for. When that merge occurred, there were some policies, I believe, I don't know for sure, that the board either maybe never adopted or adopted differently that ended up on our website. There were some policies that possibly were revised, but Strauss Esme had an outdated version because they didn't know that we revised it up there. I've never gone through an extensive policy audit myself, but I believe that the process really is looking through old board minutes to identify the policy that we approved, figuring out the date, and making sure what was actually approved is what's on our website. And I think that it's definitely time for that. And I would feel really good about completing that and then saying, we're in a really good spot, and I feel confident in myself and our board to make sure that we can update that and keep it pretty regular and consistent.
I think that's a major objective, but also part of us becoming involved with it. Much better to have Strauss Esme do it. We're involved with it instead of us taking it on. I'll agree to that. But I think it's just, it's just good for us to become familiar with that policy book, knowing what the sections are, what's in there, what's not in there, and just be familiar with it. Because it comes up, you know, it will come up, especially now that it's searchable. And if there's an issue with a parent and they search it and they question it, we should be able to address those questions. I'm just throwing those two out there. One would be the negotiations to successfully negotiate and agree to a successor collective bargaining agreement with the Stanhope Education Association by June of 2024, and to approve the funding and support to engage and complete a district policy audit prior to the conclusion of 2023, 2023, '24 school year as our board objectives.
In addition to this one.
Yes, in addition to that. Because I think it's important for us to be involved with the school as much as we can and visible at events. I think that bodes well for us and the community. And I think it's good for kids to see us active in their doing this, in their circles. Anybody else have something they would like to put forth or take one away?
My only question would be if there's any guesstimate on the cost of like the Strauss analysis. I just wouldn't want to hamstring you if it ends up being a greater cost than anticipated and we have a goal to finish it by the end of the year. So long as we have the out of art, if the cost is more than what we anticipated, we could adjust the goal later on, then it sounds great. But that would be my only thought.
So we, my understanding is that we will ultimately, after discussion, not necessarily vote, but agree to these goals to be drafted for our next meeting, which will allow us an opportunity to investigate the cost. If, after speaking with Strauss Esme, Debbie and I feel as though the cost is prohibitive, clearly, we'll let you know beforehand and we can potentially strike the goal. I still think it's something that needs to happen so we can look into other options as well. But we'll have some time to do that before we actually ask the board to approve the goals.
Full disclosure, between CUSAC negotiations and this project, I would sell a kidney to have Strauss Esme do that. I will do that for you.
I just reviewed the recommendations from there. So they categorize their policy in, I believe, three different categories. You have your mandated, you have your recommended, and you have your suggested, right? The mandated policy, we have to have. I'm confident that we have all of that. The question is whether or not they're up to date, right? So they'll draft a policy when a new law, you know, takes place. And as we sit on our policy committees, we typically discuss any changes, revisions to those policies. Now, when we migrated to the new online system, it's possible that they uploaded policy without our revisions from previous years. And I feel it's just important to make sure that if the board at some point, whether it's you as board members or previous board members, felt as though it was important enough to make changes to that policy, that it's reflected in our policy guide. And it's been a long time since we've done anything like that. You know, we did an internal audit three or four years ago when we made that transition. It was a lot of work, and there were still things that we missed. So, you know, I just, I feel pretty strongly that it's an important task.
So what I was going to suggest, and you do not have to take advantage of this, but it's available to you as part of your dues to NJSBA, we can do a policy wellness check. We recognize that you have Strauss Esme as your policy provider, but we will go through your manual and say you are missing this policy, or, and that's all part of your dues. You can just submit it since it's available online. I can give you the name, you know, you can email me and I can give you the name of the staff member. It takes a while. But you can have them running down both paths simultaneously. So when they're done with their audit, you also have the wellness check. So it's a check against a check, which I think is helpful for boards to have. And it's something that is.
Thank you. So we have a lot of new board members. So I think it's important to mention that there are really two Goliaths in New Jersey in school board policy maintenance and development. It's Strauss Esme, and it's New Jersey School Boards. We did investigate about three or four years ago whether or not we wanted to stick with Strauss Esme or potentially migrate to school boards. Our decision was ultimately to stay with them. Number one, because of the amount of work that really would have gone into making that transition. It is a lot of work. And we did not really see any financial savings in making that change. So the decision at that time was to remain with Strauss Esme.
Completely understand that. And it's not to drive you away from Strauss Esme?
I just want to make sure that our new members are aware that we're not, A, locked into Strauss Esme, and it's pretty much every district in New Jersey, and maybe I'm wrong and you can correct me.
You're pretty much correct.
Uses one or the other.
Oh, yeah. Essentially, you either use us or you use Strauss Esme. And either is fine. Certainly, they do a quality job. Certainly, we do as well. But Strauss Esme is very user-friendly in terms of the online piece. So we completely understand that. But that wellness check will help you. Once you have the audit, it's another check against a check. And I think that's always beneficial for all of you to have, which is why I throw that out there.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Especially if it's a resource that is available and we're just not tapping into it. Nothing to lose.
Yeah, it covers our blind spots, which is good.
It's always helpful. It's like just having another set of eyes. And I always think that that's beneficial because it's easy to miss something. And policy is so critically important for those of you who are new. It really is sort of the rulebook, Atlas Guide Book for parents, students, staff, as to what you can do, don't do, you know, what's permissible. And it should be the first place you look when you have to make a decision. What does our policy say about X? Class size, you know, going out for referendum. I mean, there should be a policy on almost anything you can think of. And so as a result of that, it does provide a framework for your decision-making. So routinely, boards should say, what does our policy say about this? Because you want to make sure that you are operating within the construct of your policies. So, okay. So we will use those goals for next year. We will carry on Goal Two. And the second one was around successful completion of a negotiated agreement by June 30 of 2024. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
And the next one was to engage with Strauss Esme to complete a policy audit and then have the board become more familiar with the policy manual in order to utilize it for your decision-making by June of 2024. Correct? Okay.
Okay.
So again, you've already pretty much laid out what your action steps are, right? You're going to engage Strauss Esme to do that audit. You're obviously going to begin doing the research with your business administrator around the negotiated agreement. Again, you know, if you are able to get to workshop, we do have a number of workshops around negotiations, trends in settlements. All of that material is now available on our website. You can access it whenever you'd like. You just have to log in and use your password. And then you can access the latest teacher settlement data by county, by DFG, District Factor Group, by K8, K6, you know, configuration of your district, looking at K12s or K8s or K6s. So there's all kinds of things that are available for you for that. And that really completes my presentation for this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have that I can assist with. But it is really a pleasure to be here and to work with all of you. I hope that if you are able to get to workshop, you do. This will be my 31st This will be my 31st workshop as a board member and as a staff member, and I still find it exciting. It's a wonderful opportunity to meet board members from all across the state. You will come back energized, you will come back going, wow, we are doing a lot better than I ever thought. Because you will talk to folks and you will see that there's just such a variety of things that are going on out there in the state, that it does give you a broader perspective. So I would certainly encourage you, we're going to be all four days this year, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. So if you need to take mandatory training, you're a new board member, new board member orientation is on Monday. Gov four, which is the first year of any subsequent term, is on Tuesday and Wednesday. And on Thursday, Gov two and Gov three is being offered. So if you need mandated training, that's an opportunity for you to take care of it while you're there as well. Okay? Any questions that I can answer for you? No? All right.
Are you going to be our assigned representative from school boards?
I honestly don't know the answer to that. We are in the process of adding additional staff. And so I don't have a firm answer for that for you today. I'm not trying to be evasive. I really don't know the answer to that. I am the new director of the department of field services. So I don't, I should know, right, as the director, what we're doing. But until we hire folks, I don't know who's going to be where. And so that's why I can't give you an exact answer as of today. But I hope to have that answer for you really soon, because we need the folks on board to move forward. So.
Thank you for being here. Thank you.
Thank you. Wishing you all a wonderful, peaceful, great opening and wonderful school year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll hit escape.
Okay, that takes us to correspondence. Just one quick question on the code of ethics. Are we going over this with the board or are they going to?
She suggested that the board on your own, as a board member, review the code of ethics within your packet. And that it will fulfill the mandated requirement for ethics training.
Is that everybody signs this in the beginning, so when you're done reading it, can you just sign it?
Yes, as Debbie mentioned, there's a signature for Mrs.
Code is on the inside of your folder that Gwen gave you? And then when you're done reading them, just sign that you did it. Everybody else has already done it. They do it when they, when, when January.
Thanks for joining us.
I was actually listening on the ride here, so I didn't really miss anything. I loved what Matt threw in there and, you know, he got that off the top of your dome, which was impressive adding that in. So, yeah. We don't talk enough about physical health along with the benefits that has mentally on our kids. So, awesome. All good stuff.
I can tell you, it was the primary topic of our in-service today. The speaker we brought in was all about self-care and I'll speak a little bit more to it when we get to my report.
Okay, then we'll move on to correspondence. Anybody with questions on correspondence? Next, it comes to the superintendent's report. Steve?
Thank you. Since our last meeting, zero HIV investigations, zero suspensions, which is always great for August. Can't say it'll be the same numbers for September, but we can only hope. Our back-to-school night as a reminder is Thursday, September 14th. It's not next week, it's the week after. More information will be sent out to parents from Principal DeGatol, though, you know, within the next several days. We still stretch that out as a three-hour event where K five is the first two hours. And then starting that second hour and another two hours after that, we provide programming for our sixth, seventh, and eighth, our middle school, parents. Just wanted to sincerely thank our facility staff, honestly, our entire summer staff. This has been a heck of a summer. For those of you who have been in and out of the building during the day, it has been loud. It has smelled of hot tar. We have had debris falling on our heads while we're trying to work. We have lost air conditioning. It's been challenging, but everybody has remained positive, you know, throughout. Our facility staff has been working almost around the clock to make sure that our building is ready to go. I'd say we're probably a little bit behind where Debbie and I would like to be for right now. There are some things that we would have liked to have had done today for having our staff back. But I am 100% confident that everything will be ready for the start of the school year with students on Tuesday. Debbie's been in contact with, and she'll probably touch on this a little bit more, with the roofing company. They're just finishing up. We expect them to be done this week so that they can remove any of their equipment, get the flashing up, ready to go. And it's just a matter of cleaning and tucking things away and making sure that we're ready. But thank you to our facility staff. We have three brand-new custodians who have been not just doing a great job within the work that we've asked them to do, but they're already developing wonderful relationships with the rest of our staff. And they've been welcomed into the building, which is really great. Staffing update, as we sit today, we have every single position fully staffed in our school. That said, we did have a significant resignation. Amanda Bignell, who is our RTI specialist. One of our RTI specialists has taken a new position writing curriculum for McGraw-Hill. So she's leaving public education. You know, one of the reasons I make that point, a statement that I made at our in-service today as we spoke about culture and climate and, you know, how good we have it here. This is going to be my 10th year, so I've now had nine full years here in this district. And in those nine years, we have not had a single teacher leave a position here for a lateral move. Meaning they haven't left to be a teacher somewhere else. We've had them leave for administrative positions, retirement, leaving education. But I thought that that was, that was pretty important, and I think it resonated with some of our staff that, you know, you can be a teacher almost anywhere right now because there's a shortage. They're not leaving. They're not jumping ship. They're not leaving for more money. They're not leaving because they're unhappy. And I just thought that that's, that's something that was important to really, you know, talk about, not just here, but we spoke about it a little bit this morning. So in the next two weeks, we expect to schedule interviews for that position. I think we have some internal interest as well as external interest. And, you know, that's always a domino effect, right? If you move somebody internally, now you have to fill their position. So we'll obviously be as efficient as possible to make sure that we don't have any unfilled vacancies for at least the short term. And I'll keep you in the loop from there. I wanted to mention, because I've had some questions from staff and some parents about some changes in scheduling for our STEM and art programs. Over the last several years, we have scheduled from fifth grade, and we've done it for fourth grade in the past too, fifth grade through eighth grade, we've scheduled our STEM and art programs by semester. So, meaning that for one semester, half the school year, half the students would have art two days a week, and the other half of the students would have STEM two days a week. The reason we did that is because the teachers felt as though it gives them opportunities to provide greater depth in instruction. When we got feedback that when it's once a week, you spent half of the next week revisiting what you did last week, because it was a week ago, right? So having it two days a week, they felt as though is more effective. They also have half of the number of students at any given time, right? So if you have the whole school once a week, you have the whole school that you're grading and you're developing lessons for. And, you know, it's, you're just not having that same interaction and level of assessment of your students. Because we found that successful and we've gotten positive feedback from the teacher, I was able to develop a schedule this year where we're semester-based kindergarten through eighth grade, which is a change. Change is sometimes difficult. I would say that I've gotten some feedback where not all parents have agreed with this change. I would say that we're going to continue to monitor throughout the year. And if it's something that we feel as though was not a successful change, we certainly will have discussions to change it back. But this is just not something that was done for the sake of doing it. It was done, you know, with, with feedback from our staff, doing a little bit of research. You know, other districts are doing this as well. And I'm actually really excited about it, because I, again, I think that you're going to get more out of your teachers, have being able to focus on fewer kids at one time. And I think you're going to be able to see a lot more, more done because of the frequency of the classes. So I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. I'm sorry I didn't bring it up in prior meetings, but in case anybody asks about that.
I know on the middle school where it was rolled out, one of the things the kids liked about it was they could finish a project. So if they started something on the Tuesday, they didn't have to wait until the following Tuesday. And then, oh, what if you're out sick that following Tuesday and now they've moved on to the new project? This way, kind of having it more in the same week seemed to just be more cohesive in the instruction and just in the time of being able to do stuff. So the kids were happier. And Steve said, the teachers were happier. So hopefully for the younger grades, that'll be the same. Just give them more opportunity.
We have quite a few board members with younger students, younger children. Obviously, I really appreciate your feedback throughout the year and how you feel as though that that change has either helped or hindered your kids' progress. Tomorrow is our big ice cream social. The weather looks okay. We've done this with the exception of the COVID year and one year where we had a potential hurricane coming through. We've done this every year since I started. It was actually an initiative that I, that I started my very first year here with the goal of helping students who are maybe anxious about starting school, a little bit nervous, get into the building, walk the halls. Most of our teachers and staff stay to greet the kids. They get to see their friends. The HSA has been so generous in providing the ice cream and the ice pops for the event. We'll meet on the blacktop behind the building by the outdoor basketball courts. And kids will have the opportunity to check out the school. Most classrooms will be closed because the teachers are leaving their classrooms intact. We opened them one year and the teachers came back for the start of school and nothing was intact, like the kindergarten toys roll out and everything. So classrooms will be closed. They won't be able to really tour, but they'll be at least able to find, you know, their, their, their stuff. I was hoping to have the STEM lab open, but to be honest with you, it's, it's got stuff everywhere right now. So we'll probably lock it and keep it closed. You'll be able to look through the window. But like I said, down the road, when it is ready to go and fully furnished, I do plan on having a community event to allow people the opportunity to come in and just kind of see what we've done. Again, if anybody's interested to walk around and check it out after the meeting, you're more than welcome to. I, we have over 400 RSVPs for the ice cream social tomorrow.
Wow.
Yeah, we're going to.
Yeah, we're going.
Middle schoolers be able to, like in years past, get their locker?
So it's also an opportunity for our middle school students, especially our sixth graders, to access their lockers and practice their combinations. So Alicia and I will have, well, anybody that comes will assign, we'll tell them what locker they have, we'll give them their combination, and it gives them the opportunity to kind of practice. The sixth graders, it's like what they dread the most, trying to open a locker. But they get it and they do it. We all do, and it's wonderful. Gwen had mentioned that the New Jersey School Board's convention is towards the end of October. I wanted to bring to your attention that we have been approved to present at convention this year. It'll be my first opportunity to present. I'm super excited about it. Our presentation topic, it's not smooth because they limited characters, so I had to like kind of cut it down. But the topic title is Special Education Support Kids Reduce Costs and Generate Revenue. And our plan for this presentation is to kind of share how we built our self-contained programs, our autism, our autism programs, our behavioral programs. And kind of through doing so, we were able to best support the kids who live in town rather than send them to private schools with non-typical peers. We were able to reduce the costs of sending them out of district at the time at $100,000 a kid. And in doing so over the years, we are generating significant revenue, which has allowed us the opportunity to not cut teachers over the last seven years through the S2 cuts. If you, if you look through the business agenda, we're approving tonight, or I hope we're approving tonight, seven tuition contracts. These are students who do not live in town, whose districts are paying us to educate them in programs that we've already established with teachers that we've already hired. So it's, it's, you know, we've spoken about it a million times. I don't want to belabor the point. So I'm excited to have the opportunity to share our journey and our expertise in that area with other districts who are interested. For those of you who are attending, I hope that you can also join and kind of speak to our district a little bit. But I'm very excited. That presentation's going to be Wednesday at 2:30, the Wednesday that we're at school boards. I had two other items. I want to thank Gil and his wife, the Moscatello family, for providing again, every year since I've been here, breakfast for our staff this morning on the initial in-service. It was delicious. Everybody really enjoyed it. They enjoyed it so much, they came back for lunch to eat the leftovers. And I was explaining to Gil this morning that it's a weight off of our shoulders as administrators, because we, we want to make sure that we provide something each day, and Debbie and Alicia and I, we do lunch the second day. So it allows us to not have to worry about that first day, because that's when all the pressure is, is on us to make sure everything's ready. So it was, it was great and thank you. And I wanted to plug for Lenape Valley, they are having their homecoming football game next Friday. I can't share too many details because I think a lot of it is a secret. But they're doing a military appreciation night where they expect to have some tanks up there, a video tribute on their new scoreboard. I'm planning on attending, hopefully with both of my boys, if not the whole family. And if you're into either football or just a good time and honoring our veterans, our local veterans, I'd highly recommend that you go. I think the band should be playing at halftime too, which is always a treat, because they're top-notch, award-winning marching band. So that's all I have for you today and appreciate your time.
Anybody have any questions on any of those topics? I must say this morning, just being here, helping set up and watching the staff come in and the oohs and the ahs as they walked in, you know, you could hear them talking, like just the parking lot, the fact that it, looks like it's been repaved, but it was just resurfaced and seal-coated, but re-lined. It looks like a brand-new parking lot. Oh, look how good that was. And, oh, come look at the lab. Come look at the lab. You know what I mean? It was just that, that feeling of excitement inside the building on a first day that you really, really like to see, especially in a school. And kudos to the administration for getting all of this and putting it together so that it's as far along as it got, as it is. When you think about it, just a couple of months ago, was it seven, eight months ago, we just approved the referendum. Never mind getting the drawings, never mind getting the bids and the workers, supply chain issues, you know, it's just been wonderful. So, thank you. Next, business administrator?
So I would tell you about the project update, but I think we've covered it quite a few times. Does anybody want me to add anything to it? Faculty room is done, bathrooms are done, STEM lab, we got the certificate of occupancy today. It's not completely finished, but we're happy to know that the kids can get in there and start working and be excited for it. The roof is underway. I have learned so much about construction this summer. I, really, there's just so many things that I knew, I just knew nothing about. And, 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 you know, Steve mentioned that while I do feel like we're a little behind, I'm confident we will be ready for when the kids walk in, and that's really why we're here. So I'm, I'm really confident and excited, to be honest with you. Facilities update, we do have three new people that was also mentioned. They're incredible. We're so lucky to have them. Transportation, I'm happy to say that we are in partnership again with Lenape Valley for some of our transportation, which is, we love our relationship with them. It cuts down on costs. We're able to work together to, you know, to help each other, which is a very, you know, very big deal. And if you know anything about the cost of transportation, it is exorbitant. So to be able to really keep that cost down and keep that, those lines of communication open with them and working so together with them is a, is a huge, huge deal. And the convention is coming up. I feel like we talked about everything it wants to say. I think we are almost 100% in. everything I wanted to say. I think we are almost 100% in. I don't know if you and I spoke about it yet, Avery, but we will. And I know that Matt, I know that Matt, you've got, yeah.
Oh, no.
I think that you put the new baby at home. I think you mentioned that it will be difficult to get away. Completely understandable. How is the baby? So good. That's awesome. Everybody loves a baby.
Thank you.
But I think other than that, we are staying at right now, we're staying at Ocean. We're all ready to go. I can make any changes necessary up until like the very beginning of October. So if there's anything that you need, any questions to be asked, please reach out to me, you know.
Just the actual dates. It's October.
I want to say the 26th.
We have that. It is. October 23rd is the Monday through the 26th is the Thursday.
Okay. Thank you.
And imagine my surprise when I got the email saying, congratulations, you are presenting at workshop, not even knowing we put in two.
I told you, I told you last year, and we were rejected. So I just did it without telling you this year.
Yeah, I just kind of take my rejection and go, you know, I was fine with that.
Ms. Mason, our longtime teacher of students with autism, is going to also be presenting with us. I'm not sure which day or days if she's going to come for multiple days. But she's excited to also come. She's she's a wonderful advocate of our program. And she frequently likes to tell me, she has a lot of friends in the field. She's been doing this a long time, how jealous her colleagues are of what she is able to do, because we let her and the resources that we're able to get for her. So it's it really is a wonderful program. And I'm so grateful to have the opportunity to work with the people that are supporting those kids.
I did want to go back to facilities for a second. I know that it was mentioned that between some of the issues that we were having with like HVAC and the roof, because they're all tied together. I'm a little superstitious in the sense that I'm 99.9% confident that by the time Tuesday rolls around, there won't be any more issues. But I also want to say, just bear with us as we, you know, get everything set up as far as the HVAC and everything, like the HVAC is not new, but where we do have it, sometimes it's not working great. So just bear with us while we get those things kind of married together. So if you hear like, it's hot, I'm really sorry, we're working on it, I swear. So.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions for me?
If we're not ready by first day of school, which I'm sure we will be, what type of setbacks were like anything specifically? It's just the way the work went?
There's no setbacks as far as construction goes. There's like little things in the STEM lab, like the signs and stuff like that. Or if anything was disconnected on the roof, but we're already in those conversations, we're already working to get everything up and moving. I just, because I've seen so many this summer and all the things I've learned through construction, I just don't want to say that we're not going to have any, you know, because surprises are surprises.
So our, my expectation was, fully furnished, we have the technology, hooked up, ready to go, student computers. Unfortunately, the furniture was supposed to come on and installed on August 22. They came on the 23 to deliver furniture, did not finish installing, and we did not learn until the 25 that only 3% of the STEM lab product that we ordered was here. They came today, and they installed about half of what we ordered. And we'll come back on Friday to finish the installation of everything else that we ordered, with the exception of the damaged whiteboard, the high top tables that we learned were back ordered three days before they were supposed to initially install it, and two tables that they just forgot to order for us. That said, great Friday installation, we have our furniture, which leaves negative time for Nick to hook up all of the technology in the room. So that technology hookup is going to take place in and around our students using that space. If you remember, and for those of you who were here for those meetings, we really made a decision, and we're very transparent about the fact that we can wait and hold off on the STEM lab and do it next year, where we may not have had as many of these delays, or we can do everything we can to to get it ready for this year, knowing that our current eighth graders would miss out on the opportunity to engage in that room if we waited. And I think it's important that they help, a lot of them helped us sell this referendum, right? They were handing out flyers and pamphlets and talking to their parents and nagging them to go vote. And I just felt as though all of the other projects are boring. They don't care about the roof. They don't care about the bathrooms. They don't care about the faculty room, right? Or the internet. They're just happy to be connected. This this was their showcase, their showpiece. So we felt as though it was important. That being said, that room, the construction started the day after students graduated. So even if we waited next year, I don't know if a lot of this was avoidable. I, you know, we can't predict product chain delays from a year out. And that's really what it comes down to.
And and I think that's really why I brought up the just like, you know, the full disclosure of, I don't know what I don't know. And every day, it seems, just from construction and and you know, you know, this is kind of in your line of work. I don't know what's coming around the bend. So I just wanted to say, I don't know what's going to hit me in the face on Monday night with a text message or anything. So just in case your kids come home and they're like, so this happened, I'll be like, I didn't foresee, I did my best to say in front of it.
It's a little nerve wracking that it's going to be 90 degrees next week for the start of school.
My biggest reason for building, even bringing it up, like even furniture is going to malfunction. I'm sure you guys will figure that out. But when it comes to electrical, plumbing, plumbing, final inspections and safety, those are my biggest.
That is done.
It's all done.
Then everything else works.
And passed. Like, there wasn't even a go back and do this. Everything passed. No problems.
Thank you, Stan.
Yeah.
Anybody else with questions or comments on for Deb? Steve?
Again, we kind of spoke about curriculum. We went through the goal, goal setting, where we are with the process with the migration out of Rubicon and into the Google Drive. We don't have it live on a website yet. We probably won't, at least for another month. It's been quite a bit of work, especially getting the school year going. There was two sets of curriculum that was shared with you for potential approval tonight, one of which was our STEM curriculum, and the other was science curriculum. And I just wanted to put those items on the curriculum update to see if you have any questions or would like to provide feedback before we ask you to vote on on these items.
What the what you sent us, was that in the old format or the new format?
That's in the new format.
Format, new format. Very nice.
Yep. If it was in the old format, I would not have been able to send it send it to you. I would have had to do an export into a really ugly PDF and share it with you that way. And you would have been very, very confused. I find the template and the new format very easy to to review. For those of you who are in education and have the experience of looking through curriculum, I think and hope that you'll you'll feel the same way. And our teachers also agree. It's just easier to to use.
It was very impressive. Anybody, any other comments, questions on curriculum? Policy, let's start with committees. Tom, we had this meeting last week, wasn't it?
Yes. So last week we met, and this evening we have a regulation and a policy for approval in a single reading that pertains to school threat assessment teams. The reason for the single reading is that guidelines from the state came out late in the summer. So we only had one board meeting prior to the start of school to approve the policy and regulation. And it's a state requirement that these policies and regulations be approved before the school year begins. So that is why we have a single reading on those this evening. We also have a first reading on new sick leave policy and new sick leave, a new sick leave regulation. These correlate with updates to state law regarding sick leave for school employees. In addition to that, we spoke about the policy and thought processes pertaining to having a student representative to the Board of Education, and that's listed under Old Business for discussion this evening. Any questions on the policies or regulations?
Moving forward, Sussex Ed Services. We are exactly where we are here today. They're opening up this week. Our enrollment is way up. We're at 54 students. Our project search has opened up its second site at Hackensett Hospital. So we now have two locations, Hackensett Hospital and Newton Hospital. And the nice part is, is that the supervisors from the disciplines are the same supervisors at both places. So they know the program in and out. So it makes it an easy transition to start the program new at Hackensett. So that's wonderful. The gentleman at, who is the head of Atlantic Health there at Newton Hospital, he, I believe, is going to be with us. They're doing a presentation at school boards also. And he's going to be there advocating for the program. And we did receive a recognition, a national recognition this year for groups of schools that had from this program that had 100% job placement. And that was very nice. That was out in Milwaukee. So school's going well, and we're anxious to open again at our last board meeting, which was August 20 something there. At that date, we were fully staffed. And nobody knows what it is like today. The change is pretty quick. Okay. Anybody with any questions on Sussex Ed? Stan Hope here. It's just been a crazy month. I've been in here almost every week, sometimes twice a week, just looking over this construction, seeing the progress, talking to Steve and Deb, you know, if we can help at all, what's going on. I must say, having done two major construction jobs where I worked previously, the synergy between the working team here is phenomenal. I was in this school yesterday at, it was after school, 2:30, 3:00?
2:00, yeah.
Yeah. This room was filled with stuff from this end to that end, just filled with stuff that was taken out of classroom box boxes. It was incredible. When I came in here this morning at 7 o'clock, tops of 7:00 for breakfast, this is how it looked. You know what I mean? And it was all hands, all hands on deck and came here and Steve is pushing tables, Deb's pushing tables, you know, everybody's moving stuff around. It was, it was, it was great to see such a team effort to get it going. And I think that bodes well, that becomes contagious. Teachers see that, kids see that. It becomes a part of the culture of the of the building, that spirit of teamwork. And greatly appreciate the administrative staff taking that on. Other than that, I think we're in great shape to open, excited to open, and can't wait to see the lab in operation. That's that's where I am. Anybody with questions? That takes us to public session number one. Seeing no public in the building. We will move on to travel and workshop. There was one item there. Any questions on that? Okay, next agenda item is minutes for approval. These are the minutes from the July 19 regular meeting and the July 19 executive session. This is a voice vote. So is there a motion to approve these minutes as written?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Comments, concerns, edits? All those in favor of accepting the minutes as written, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? No? Anyone abstain?
I abstain as I wasn't present.
Okay. And just as point of reference, right, you know, you could still vote if you read them. Okay. Administrative action items, items one through three. Is there a motion?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? I did come in and meet with Steve and Deb and go over that memorandum of agreement as required with the police. I went over that with them. Any, anyone with questions or discussion? Not roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Battalato?
Do I say here or?
You can say here. Yeah. Ms. Harold?
Yes.
Mr. Valley?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Yagnam?
Yes.
Mr. Moscatello?
Yes. Next is policy action items one through four. Those are the items that Tom just reviewed with us a few minutes ago. Is there a motion? Motion?
Second.
Any discussion? So just, we're doing a first and second reading on the school threat assessment teams. So we're approving that tonight. It becomes policy. It's a one read on, it counts for both. Anybody else with questions or discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Battalato?
Yes.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Mr. Valley?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Yagnam?
Yes.
Mr. Moscatello?
Yes. Next is educational action items one through three. Is there a motion?
Motion?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a question on the bell schedule and the change. Have you heard anything from anybody one way or the other?
Nope.
I'll go, no news is good news.
I'm sure I'll have people lined up at 7:45, but.
I'm sure. But for now, I'm going to go, no news is good news.
I spent not a lot of time, but good amount of time looking at both of those curriculums. And I was very, very impressed in the way it was presented. Very easy to follow from grade level to grade level. It was easy to see how things were scaffold. You know what I mean? As things went up, it just got more in depth, more in depth. And you needed to know A before you can move to B. It was, it was very well done. The thing with the STEM that, I didn't want to say too much when we were talking before about the semester courses. But I think whenever you have a new program in a new lab, the best scenario you could have is a semester course. Because if you start off and things just don't go exactly the way you want it, it's very easy to make the correction the next semester. You know what I mean? You can adjust and get your program fine tuned faster. But.
There's been some discussion, not a complaint, right? But it's, well, some kids are going to have to wait to use the new lab. Well, my argument to that is, well, those kids will now get to have the refined instruction, once we work through the kinks and all that other stuff. So.
Technology and.
So you're not wrong, because my soon to be eighth grader was really excited when she got her schedule. And I kid you not, she said to me, Mom, this is fabulous. I have art first. She's not a huge art person. I'm like, okay, but why are you suddenly excited for art? Like, what? She's like, no, she said, I'm excited for STEM. But I'm excited for STEM in the second half of the year, because by then, everybody's going to know what they should be doing.
Yeah. Well, it just, and that curriculum was very well done, very well done. And, you know, it started from the, you know, kindergarten and very basics and the, you know, all the way up, you're talking about engineering concepts, which was exciting to see. So I thought both curriculums were very well done. Any, any discussion?
Can I just make a suggestion for Mr. Hagman? And if you've already done so, I apologize. You think about, have you thought about utilizing the phone system to send a quick message out to all the parents, just reminding them?
Reminding them of?
The new bell schedule.
Um.
As a parent, I voice on that the most effective way to communicate with.
I can, yes, I can do a voice alert. I did send the letter out through that system, but I can certainly do a voice alert.
Especially because they read the letter and then forgot and then.
As a parent, so I'm always, you know, cognizant of the better times to receive phone calls from automated phone calls from the school superintendent.
Six in the morning.
Maybe like a Friday afternoon?
Yeah.
Type of thing? Okay.
I would say in this case, since school starts on a Tuesday, maybe a Monday afternoon. I only because honestly, if you do it on Friday, and then people are having a really fun holiday weekend, I'm not certain that everybody's going to remember come Tuesday morning that school changes the time. Just a thought.
I have a reminder for myself to schedule an alert, and you'll just have to be surprised when I send it.
Fair enough.
I prefer Friday personally. I'm sorry to disagree.
So you can expect a knock.
As much preparation as possible.
Mike is coming on the bus from Lenape here, and I'm just going to hope that that goes smoothly.
Well, I'm thinking clearly, when I have a little more than a couple hours sleep.
Yeah.
I'm. I'll make that decision and we'll go from there.
Okay. Any other questions on this item, on these items? Roll call please.
Mrs. Battalato?
Yes.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Mr. Valley?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo, Mr. Yagnam?
Yes.
Mr. Moscatello?
Yes. Should we wait to move on?
We have a motion passed, so I think.
Okay. Okay. Personnel action items one through 14. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion, a lot of people on here.
Yeah, I actually had a question, I was reading over, I just wanna make sure it's in this section. It was referencing the, like, emergency maintenance individual. That might be the next one though.
It might be business.
And if so, I apologize, I think it is, so.
I think it's in the business section.
Sorry about that.
Just wanna take a moment to, to recognize Ms. Bignell. Her 17 years here at the Valley Road School. In addition to her time here as a student and her time at Lenape as a student. It's bittersweet because we don't really wanna lose her. But that's a long time in public education and I think she's doing something that she feels pretty passionate about, so. Wish her the best of luck, we will certainly miss her and, and I told her, if, if her stuff's good enough, then maybe we'll adopt it from McGraw Hill, but we'll, we'll have to see, so.
She was my daughter's favorite teacher, so I'm set, I have to give her the news.
Couple questions, number five.
Yeah.
What is Mr. Reynolds doing for?
So, it is, there are a lot of things within schools that just don't make sense as far as laws and regulation and expectations. It is required that every single school have a school media specialist, right? That is a very specific certificate that very few people have. It's also a relatively high paying job when you have that certificate. We don't really have a library, we don't really have a need for a school media specialist. However, as it's a CUSAC requirement, it will be expected that we have one. Mr. Reynolds, who's the Lenape Valley principal, used to be their media specialist and has this, that certificate. So, I spoke with him and he is willing to consult with us to assist with our media specialist needs. When and if necessary, we have our new little library in the back, you know, where he may be able to kinda help out here and there. So we developed a very small stipend for him to assist us with that. Which should, based on my conversation with the previous executive county superintendent, fulfill the CUSAC requirement when they come in to monitor us in the spring.
My only other question, did we lose Mrs. Fayer as the second Battle of the Books coordinator? Cause I only see the stipend for Ms. Fayer.
I think that we probably approved her at a previous meeting, if I had to guess. I don't think we lost her, I think she's gonna continue to do it, I think we may have already approved her.
Excellent.
Yakub, were you referring to Joe and the, and the emergency maintenance?
Yes.
On the stipends, that's in, that's in here. Yeah, it's here, it's on page six.
Yeah, I, I know the amount as well, I'm just curious on how that works if there is an emergency. Is that just a given rate for that day, is it a flat? How does that work?
So, that's, that's exactly what it is.
I wanna make sure that individuals, everything from their time to mileage.
It's everything.
Is taken care of.
It's a flat, flat rate for him to get a phone call at a ridiculous hour to come in and handle anything we need, which quite honestly, he does all the time and I have to constantly remind him to put in a time sheet to get paid for it. He is just always on call for us, he's, he's incredible. But yes, it is a flat rate for that time.
It is.
When we've had more seasoned custodians who have been here for a period of time, they also would respond. Their compensation is specifically outlined in the collective bargaining agreement. Whereas Joe is not a member of that agreement. Which is why we have to pass.
Could exceed a certain amount of hours. How does it work for him?
Well, um, it, it really is just 164 a full day, but that's only for emergency. It, that's very rare. If he comes in and works, actually, that's not, well, no, if he comes in for facility use because he has a boiler license, let's say HSA has, has something, he does get paid at a, a different rate. This is only for, like, you know, if like a doctor's on call, so like he just comes for that.
You know, I'm very familiar with that and with new sys, we, we have a lot of new stuff coming up, so. Trying to think ahead.
Yeah, yeah, so for us, it's, it's a flat rate. I don't know how that works in, in an area, but I can get you, uh, I'm part of school buildings and grounds and I can get like, like some feedback from other districts for you.
Is he happy?
Is Joe happy?
Hard to find somebody to do that, yeah, that, that's really my reason for this.
I like to think that, and not, I think Joe's happy. I think that Joe's happy being here, I think we treat Joe very well, as Joe treats us very well. And, you know, we run a ve- very family oriented type of place. You know what I mean, like?
We had to tell Joe to go home today.
Yeah, thank you.
Cause he was here until nine last night.
It's hard to find people in those positions and it's something that you don't wanna lose.
So if you're looking to poach him, I'm gonna say, do not do that.
No, he's too close to here.
Cause we need him, thank you.
No, I'm good.
Uh, and I don't disagree with you, I don't. Uh, and we're, we're very lucky to have him. But I, I can get you some other feedback from other areas to give you an idea, a better idea.
As long as he's happy and feels valued, that's good.
I think so.
Just for my own, cause we're discussing it, the $80 half day.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's for him coming in and for working four hours, whether he works four hours or not.
It, it is, it is, yeah, yeah.
He comes in, he works an hour and a half, he gets paid a half.
Yes, absolutely.
He goes over four, he works six hours, he gets, he gets the eight hours.
Correct.
Okay, just, just wanted to make sure I understood.
Yeah, sometimes there's not enough hours in a day where he can't do something like mow the lawn, which he loves doing every once in a while, if I can't find Joe, I know where he is. Um, but he'll just come in on Saturday. We know that it's a safety issue, certainly to not have the lawn cut as, as well as, looks wise, it's, doesn't look good to not maintain your property. And if it doesn't get done, he'll certainly come in on a Saturday and we obviously compensate him for that.
The board's already approved a, a specific Saturday stipend for him as well.
Right.
So.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else with questions?
The, the individual who's got the strike through for substitute, just withdrew her application. So, we just took her off the agenda.
Okay. Take the vote please.
Of course, give me two seconds, okay. Mrs. Battalato?
Yes.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Mr. Valley?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Yagnam?
Yes.
Mr. Moscatello?
Yes. Next is business service items one through 21. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Additional students coming in for the program, the, is that seven additional on top of what we had from last year?
No, those are the seven students who have been here. There's one student who's new to us this year. We had two or three graduate last year. I think that there's one new student. Uh, that's tuition based.
Our contracts for students that come in are annual, so we have to change the number here.
So with the loss of then one or two students, and that, what would probably be 50,000 or 60,000 is that?
We, we only budget for three or four students each year, knowing that it's a risk to budget for more.
Sure.
Um, you know, and we'll have future discussions as we meet for budget. With the COVID funds that we've received, we've been allowed to do that. As, next year, we won't have those funds. It may be necessary to have a more accurate budget with more kids in it to be able to budget for our needs, but that's something that we'll, we'll discuss as we get closer there, so.
I also, when I do budgeting, and, and I've definitely said this during budget season, I, and please excuse the expression, but I plan for the worst and pray for the best. So I always like to err on the side of, we don't have anything, and then when we do, I get very excited.
Steve's pointing out 18 real quick. That's our local shared service agreement, is that what you were gonna ask about? Uh, we've done this now for three years, I believe, if not more. And this agreement simply covers our school nurses. When and if, which we do often have to loan them out or borrow them. There's subs, we're very fortunate, we have a few substitute school nurses, but most districts do not. So we'll often get a call from Lenape or Byram or Net Kong. We do not have a school nurse today, we're still opening, however, we need to distribute medication. Only the school nurse can distribute medication to students. An administrator cannot, a teacher cannot. So we'll often allow her to go, go up there and she's always very happy to do so, to assist. And, you know, we've, we've borrowed nurses as well, cause listen, they're human, she can't be here every day. Considering, you know, her office is a Petri dish and she's gonna get sick sometimes, so.
I also wanted to make mention of number eight. I just always wanna draw attention to it whenever it's on here and that is being approved to do payment of bills after or in between the time of the board meetings. When you work here, you approve a bills list that gets put out and then we send bills out, the checks out after that. Because of the projects going on and because we don't wanna hold up any of the project work. It, it is on here that I can pay them accordingly when they're finished, after inspection of their, their work and after the architect approves it, in between those time periods, just to make sure there's no backup on the projects moving forward. Cause they'll be like, well, you're not gonna pay me, I'm not doing it, so.
Okay, anyone else with questions, concerns on any of the items? Not hearing any, roll call vote please.
Mrs. Battalato?
Yes.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Mr. Valley?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Yagnam?
Yes.
Mr. Moscatello?
Yes. That takes us to new business. Anybody bringing forth any new business? Uh, just a reminder on new business, we've talked about negotiations already this evening. And at some point, I need to appoint a committee. Probably our sessions would start somewhere after the first of the year. You know what I mean? So, I had asked if anybody was interested in being on that committee, if they could let me know. I know Jen, who had told me you were interested.
I'm extremely interested.
Extremely interested.
Yeah.
That's good.
No, I'm serious.
That's good. Matt?
I'm asleep on that one.
Okay. Tom?
Are you getting any with the baby?
Avery?
Oh, I'm sorry, um, can I think about it?
Sure, well, I, I can only have two.
Okay.
I, uh, cause myself is three and then four becomes a quorum and we can't, we can't do that. So, I just wanted to have a field of people who I know are interested, then I could, I could pick the two out of the field of three.
And to be clear, Mate decided she wanted to do it, I would pick her over me, any day of the week. But if you don't have two volunteers, I'd be glad.
Okay, but it's always good to get someone new in there, you know, it's, it's good to have a bullpen.
It's always good to learn when you're negotiating with experienced negotiators. Right, cause Matea's youngest is in middle school, right?
Yep.
In all likelihood, she's not gonna be here forever. It's important for, for board members who maybe have aspirations of being here long term, right? To, to become, to learn with veterans, to become that veteran, right? So, three years, we're doing this again. Hopefully, if we, if we negotiate and approve a three year contract. We're doing this again, we've done one year contracts before.
Yes. Okay, any other new business? Old business. BOE student representative. Tom, you went, or Steve, we talked about this at that.
We talked about this at our policy committing, committee meeting. I brought it up because I put some feelers out to the other K8 and K6 districts within the county. Honestly, I said, if you have a policy, can you share it? If you have written procedures, can you share it? I'd like something to at least work off the brain to my board. Nobody has anything. You know, it's not a requirement to have a sitting student board member at, at an elementary and middle school. The feedback that I did get is that most of the districts will invite students out periodically throughout the school year. You know, sometimes it was student government, sometimes it was not. And, and the purpose of that was to give the students the voice, right? To present what the student needs and wishes and, and their feedback on, on their experience. That said, and being given the opportunity to really digest everything, I, I think it would be a really great opportunity for us to maybe do something that's a little different, that's a little outside the box. I know that we have students who are interested. So, my suggestion at least to start would be to not set policy that we then have to approve and abide by until that policy is either changed or abolished. But to maybe put, put some practices in place to start this year to allow opportunities outside of the student council to, to participate there. I would not suggest every meeting. I think that it's a lot to try to coordinate a student to be here at every meeting. Possibly quarterly, right, we have, we have marking periods. My idea would be, when we, when we recognize our honorable students, to hopefully engage as many people as possible in, in that student's opportunity to speak on behalf of their student body. So, early on in the school year, we will have students vote on their class, their student council, vice president, president, secretary, treasurer. Once that is established, what I'd like to do is, is, I guess almost as an advertisement, but to our students, solicit feedback or see if there's anybody who's interested in serving in this role. I'd like for them to submit a letter of interest to the board, so that we can, you can review it as, as a board. If we get three, there's no reason we can't have all three. If we get one, there's no, that's why I don't wanna set policy. I kinda wanna see where this goes and, and kinda let it evolve on its own. It may only be people who are in student council, and if that's the case.
So a question to that, though, our student council as it currently sits is only open to the eighth grade.
Correct.
I think there's a missed opportunity then.
Well, I'm saying we can put it out for all of our members.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cause otherwise, as I say, there's a missed opportunity to start engaging younger.
Yep, no, so, identify who our student council is first and then put that opportunity out. Cause I'd not only like to invite this individual or group of individuals to board meetings, I'd also like to invite our student council in addition to. This person, there has to be supervision, there has to be facilitation and coordination. I think it's only natural to include this person with student council when they meet with our eighth grade, our eighth grade advisors, even if it's, even if it's, is, even if it is a sixth grader, there's no reason why they can't participate in some of those discussions. So, I don't know exactly how that will play out, but with your permission, I'd, I'd like to try to put, put it in place, see who's interested, see where we go, have a little fun with it, have the kids come and speak to their student body and the parents and kinda go from there. And if by the end of the year, we're saying, hey, this was great, we wanna formalize it, then we can draft up some procedures and, and see where it takes us. So I don't know if you guys have any feedback, objections, suggestions, I'm all ears.
Sounds great.
Okay, we'll see where we go.
Best of both worlds.
I hope so. We could get 12 kids interested, we can get zero kids interested, you never know.
Anybody else with any old business? That takes.
Oh, real quick.
Go ahead.
The basketball court, was that ever revisited?
So, the, that was part, that was a referendum project, you mean the outside one?
Yeah.
So that was a referendum project, it was, we actually had a bid for that. There was only one bid and I believe it was quadruple our. There was only one bid and I believe it was quadruple our budget.
Right.
Uh, so our decision from there was to not accept the bid, uh, to put a hold on the project. Because these referendum projects do not have to get done right away. My concern, and I believe Debbie shares it, is the HVAC in this building is going to be the, the biggest project of all of the projects within the referendum and knowing that it's a year out and we don't know what these bid numbers are going to come in at. Uh, we don't know how much the units are going to cost. It's most important, it is most critical for this building to have the HVAC done. So we want to do that first and then we can assess how much we have left of the referendum funds. And if, and I'm, I'm hopeful and I'm confident that there will be funds remaining where we can then rebid the project and hopefully get within that budget. But unfortunately, that's one that's going to have to hold off. It still may be able to get done in the spring or the summer. It's just going to depend on what, what our bids are for the HVAC and what they are for the science lab, which are the two projects that we are, are definitely moving forward with next summer.
Students, oh, sorry, Yakub.
No, you might actually add, say what I was about to ask.
I was just gonna say, do the students have access to the nice, much safer grassy field behind that basketball court for recess?
Do you, uh, you mean for recess down below?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, a lot of that depends on the supervision that we have. We currently have two cafeteria playground aides that are staffed. We like to have three. Not having three, I don't know if we can adequately supervise the kids being that spread out. What I will tell you is they use, they use the basketball courts for four-square, uh, soccer, basketball. They use the, the playground equipment and the, the grass area, there's a grass area just within the walking path where the kids will often play football and tag and other games. Uh, we have used that lower path, uh, that lower grass section before. Um, but a lot of it, again, depends on how many adults were able to, to get out there.
Did any kids get injured on there last year from any cracks, dips?
Not that I can remember. Um, Mrs. Frank would, I mean, listen, kids get injured at recess all the time, but I don't re- if, if it was a result of, of something like that, uh, I'm pretty confident Mrs. Frank would have brought it to my attention. And I don't remember honestly, any significant injuries from, from recess, uh, last year, so.
Just real quick on that note, when I was consulting with an attorney regarding some liability issues in a, in a different matter, you know, liability is really hard to prove. Uh, if the facilities are really upkept and there's no reason to believe that they cause, could cause harm, but when you look at that basketball court, certainly I don't think there would be any disagreement, uh, if there were something to happen out there. So, um, you know, I understand the allowance of funds and that that was super expensive, but just something to keep on the top of the mind.
Best case scenario, we're still able to do that next year.
Yeah.
Um, you know, and, and in, through this process, it was one of the first projects that we bid. And through this process, we've also made some relationships with contractors who maybe were not initially interested in bidding the project. So hopefully getting additional bids will allow us to stay, if not within our budget, somewhat close to our budget.
There are things we can do, a fraction of the price to prevent that happening from this year, from seal ups. We don't need to rebuild the whole thing just to get it up and ready for the rest of the year.
It's not necessarily the cracks that I think are the greatest safety issue. It's the fact that it's, it's got major dips. And I don't know the, the reason for that. I can't speak to whether or not it was paved appropriately. But if you look at it, the, I have questions about how it was initially done. But I think, I think the spec has, I thought the spec was, everything came out right down to the bottom of the base and it starts with a new base on up.
Please understand, I'm not even being remotely facetious when I say this. I get sued ten to fifteen times a month. We're talking dime-sized cracks over sidewalks, right? No, those are just people outside their homes. The school, it's a little bit different. So I just like the fact, fact Matt brought it up because there might be things that we can do going into this year that are at a fraction of the cost of replacing it that maybe you might want to dive into. Sealing it up is really, it's a two-day thing. It's quick, it's easy. It'll actually buy you even more time if you need it. Just food for thought.
You mean as, as an, as a interim measure?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They force them to have to seal it up.
Take eligible dangerous things.
Yeah. It does wonders, yeah.
In terms of the supervision, you mentioned ideally having three, currently having two. Is that something we're still pursuing or was that more of a budgetary concern?
No, it's not budgetary. Uh, one of our cafeteria aides has retired from her retirement job and moved south. So we're, we're, we put a couple, um, notices out, uh, to parents, uh, in our Thursday emails. We'll, we'll send another one. Most often, it's a lot of parents who are looking to get back into the workforce. It's right in the middle of the day, so you don't have to worry about interference with drop-off or pickup and it's not an easy job, but if, if you're a social person and you like kids, it's, it's a really fun job. The two individuals that we have, Mr. Mr. Bill and, and Mr. George are, you know, both retired and they are referees and umpires and they just love being here with the kids and playing with them and, you know, the only, the only issues I have with them is when I tell George, we can't go outside today and he goes, I'm going outside. No, we, we can't. It's too cold or it's too wet or whatever else. So they get the kids playing and active and, you know, they came to graduation. They came to the eighth grade dance. They come to all of the, these kids' events and they're really invested. So hopefully we can find a third person to partner with them. Um, I'm sure we will. It's just a matter of time. We've operated with two before. We've cut down to two for budgetary needs in the past, but it, this is not a budgetary thing right now. It's just a matter of finding the right person. So if you know anybody who's interested. Anyone else? Okay, that takes us to our next public session. Seeing no public in the order, in the, uh, room here, that's closed, that takes us to our next item. Uh, before we go to adjournment, is there anyone who has anything for the good of the order? Anyone? Comments or concerns? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Posed? Abstained? Thank you very much.
Thank you.